I like to call this February 12 regular council meeting and work session the order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence and let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Mr. Gill, anyone do roll call, please? Mr. Pezz.
Here.
Ms. Cullen, Ms. Zill, Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cousins.
Here.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Gattuso.
Present.
Mr. Giuseppe.
Here.
So we were in executive session discussing informational session on banking. We had a presentation presented to council earlier this evening. No action items were taken. And we're also were discussing.
Labor relations.
Labor relations, thanks Jeff. Labor relations for union negotiations. Okay, with that, I'm going to open up public participation. So anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to the podium. And state your name. So we have no public comment at this time, correct? Alright, so that ends public participation. So I want to bring up Steve Reeves, who's the chief. Was it 51? No, what number?
So I'm with Bristol Consolidated, which is Station 50.
Station 50.
Yes, I'm also the president of Bristol Borough Fire Association. That's the reason why I'm here this evening. So, good evening, my name's Steve Reeves, as I said, I'm the president of Bristol Borough Fire Association. Behind me are emergency responders from the Bristol Borough Fire companies. We should actually have probably about another 18 guys here, however, there was a fire in Edgely where three apparatus were dispatched to. So we have about 15, 18 first responders there right now. They were coming to this meeting tonight. Just so I can start, in 2019, Department of Community and Economic Development began a project to assess the fire service here in Bristol Borough. At the request of the Borough. The DCED study was issued to the Borough officials in February 2021. The DCED concluded that the Borough, the fire companies has several in-depth issues that need to be addressed, which for night's purposes, I'll only mention a few of them. One, facilitate the development of association of all fire companies with the goal of operating as a single entity. Number two, facilitate consolidation of operations to a single location and financially and construct a new contemporary fire stations to facilitate this project. Tonight, we're here to announce the following. All the Bristol Borough Fire companies are committed to moving into a single centralized firehouse. All Bristol Borough Fire companies are committed to reorganizing and operating as one organization and moving into a single centralized firehouse. Over the past year or so, the Bristol Borough Fire companies have developed strong partnerships with each other, the stakeholders, and the community itself. We're working on our own partnership on numerous fronts. Operationally, on emergency scenes, we're having interchangeable crews, we're training together. We have community engagement events, recruitment and retention, and even social. The Bristol Borough Fire Association has been working with the academic oversight committee of Mrs. McAvain, Mrs. Giuseppe, and Dr. Schaefer to promote volunteerism and to recruit high school students to the fire service. And I must remark, they're a wonderful group. They're an absolute asset to Bristol Borough. During this process, we also lost Mayor Saxon, another asset to this community. However, there has been a seamless transition from Mayor Saxon to Mayor Giuseppe. Mayor Giuseppe shares the same enthusiasm as we do. We share many of the same thoughts, points, and goals. We thank him for those efforts. And last, we recognize the Borough Council, at last month's meeting, council passed a resolution as historically significant and a major commitment to the future of the protection of the Borough regardless of fire service. This type of financial commitment has never been seen since the boroughs been settled in 1681. This decision, one day, will be written in a history book. So we look forward to moving forward and working with the Borough Council and residents of Bristol Borough. That is all I have, if there's any questions.
So I just wanted to make a couple of comments. You and I met months and months ago at my office to start the conversation and get the ball moving in the right direction. And I couldn't have been, as you said, more enthusiastic about the decision of fire companies come together. Because, you know, my goal is the mayor is to provide the best possible fire protection to the residents of this town. And all of you have that same goal in mind. And going forward, it's not about fire companies just surviving, it's about you guys thriving. And you'll thrive much better as one individual entity. I mean, this was the first year, I believe, you did one collective recruiting effort, as you mentioned. And it's a lot better than four different fire companies trying to recruit individually to four different places.
Absolutely.
So I love the commitment, I'm sure I speak for council when I say that, you know, they all love the commitment. And now our next step is to try and find you a new home and a new location. We talked about some spots. Once I get some information from our new solicitor, I'll make a presentation to council, or we could collectively do that. And then we can try and see how we're going to move forward with securing some funding and make that happen.
I think that we're, I've been saying it for years, definitely committed to bringing you guys together. And I think now that you came here tonight to make that decision publicly, I think it's all downhill from here.
Right, yeah, we're all committed, we're ready to move forward.
There's a lot of money out there for fire companies to put up buildings and, you know, I think it's going to be very successful.
And just so the public's aware, you know, as we talked and we talked at the fire association meeting, our goal is to, yes, create new and embrace the future. We also want to embrace the history of all the fire departments in town and all the generations of families that invested their time and their efforts into providing fire protection. So as we move forward and create this new building and, you know, house you under one place, we will definitely make sure that we embrace the history of Bristol Borough Fire.
Steve, I know you're working a lot of hours in this, so.
Yeah, we're, my fifth year is actually, our third year is actually the association being a group, so full two years and now we're third now. So there's a lot of people that have put a lot of effort into it. One person that jumps out at me right away is Larry Monty, hasn't missed one meeting. He's a goodwill, those number three member of, yeah, there's a lot of people that put a lot of effort into this.
Well, we can't thank you guys enough for how hard you've worked and we try to get this done.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
No, I just, you know, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, Steve, I just really want to congratulate you. I know you're humble about it, you're not the only one doing things, and I know that's also true. But I truly believe we wouldn't be where we are without your leadership and Mayor Giuseppe, you know, picking up right where Mayor Saxon left off and really taking it and running with it. It's a minor miracle from where we were a couple of years ago, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, Steve. Okay, I'll just stay with you now.
Okay, I just have a couple of things I want to talk about. First thing I want to bring up is the parking app, give everyone an update on the parking app and the meters. So the parking app has been extremely successful. And to give you an idea of how successful it's been, just between the months of October and December, the app was used over 2,500 times. And 1,300 times alone, just in the month of December. So it definitely has been adopted by the people visiting Mill Street and Rackwood Street, they're using the app. And from a percentage of revenue, the borough's revenue is up 60% in collections certain times. And it's still split between the meters and the app, so they're still utilizing both, and that's why we left the meters in place. But I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the parking app has really been embraced by the people visiting Mill Street and Rackwood. And it's been utilized, like I said, in just the first three months, over 2,500 times. The other thing I wanted to mention is Nixol, people still need to sign up for Nixol. We have over 1,300 people that have registered for the Borough alerts, but we still need more adoption for when there's coastal flooding and different things happening in town. So it's really important that you go on the Borough website and follow the instructions. There's even a video now on our Facebook page that you can follow the Nixol instructions to sign up for our alerts. One other thing I have that I wanted to mention is police training, just to give the public and everyone on council an idea of what's going on. We have eight different training sessions for our cops. So I think it's important to let council know and the public know that we're constantly training our force. So we have eight different training sessions just in the month of January alone. Everything from critical incidents training, to the chief attending the school, into firearms training. So that we're constantly making sure we provide the public and the residents of this town with the best possible police protection and give them the best tools. One other thing with the police is our UTV. Everyone heard that, you know, we secured the grant, we got the UTV, it's being utilized. That UTV, we get a report of where it's patrolled, it's been along the canal, along the walking paths, House Street, and other numerous areas, just patrolling. It's one of the vehicles that our cops now use to patrol these areas where we couldn't provide a police car going down. So the UTV is out there, and it'll be out even more as the weather gets nice.
Good.
Two more things I have. One thing is, I want to ask council to adopt the presentation, or I should say a proposal, from 1681 Digital Media Solutions. So it's a proposal for $700 a month to 1681 Digital Media Solutions. They will provide us with Facebook and Instagram presence, they will manage those two pages for us. Along with putting out a newsletter to the public, a digital newsletter every other month. The newsletter will be made available on our website. But for those who go to the website and sign up for the newsletter and provide an email address, we will blast it out to the residents or to anyone who signs up and wants the Borough newsletter every other month, this way they don't have to search for it. So that's something I'm asking council to consider going forward. And then the last talking point I have is, I was in a meeting about a future celebration that's going to be taking place for the 200th year for General Lafayette's visit to the Borough. We all know about our Welcome Friend Arch. So in late September, they are putting a celebration together. It's going to happen down on, you know, the corner of Mill and Rackwood. Lot more details still need to be worked out, but I wanted to let people know we will be celebrating his 200th visit to the Borough. And in those discussions, I was able to talk to Bob Markey, who has a relationship with the people that own the old book factory. And it's always been an idea of mine to put some black and white large canvases up on that book factory wall to soften that entrance as you're coming into the Borough. And he was able to put me in touch with the owner. And the owner said he's all about doing whatever he can in terms of allowing us to do that. It would take some fundraising, it would take a lot of planning. But I think it'd be really neat if we can figure out how to put some nice, huge, black and white canvases embracing the history of the Borough. Leekwings, Kaisers, the Grundy Mills, so as people are coming into town, they're lit up and then people can see, you know, what the Borough once was. And also, as I said, just clean up that entrance into the Borough on Rackwood Street. So it's good that the owner's on board, there's a lot more that has to go into that planning and to getting some money to do that. But I just wanted to put that out there to council, just for something to think about and something that we could talk about later on.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Busy one.
A little bit.
Chief.
We've been inundated with parking complaints on the corners and the fire plugs the past month. We've addressed that, we see a big difference there now. And we were inundated with speeding and stop signs throughout town, because a lot of people are cutting through town instead of taking them out 13. So we secured a grant, so for the next two weeks, there'll be officers out there on the state grant with the stop signs and the speeding in town, you'll see the cars out there.
Any questions for the chief or the mayor?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys. Betty, what do you have?
Um, well, I wanted to let everybody know from Bristol Borough that Representative State Representative Tina Davis is having a Love Your Heart Fair on Friday, February 23rd, from 10 to noon at the Bristol Township Senior Center. She represents this Borough also and the Bristol people. And I just think it's a great thing to go out and visit, you're going to have health screenings, I'm sorry, activities late refreshments. And it's just something, we used to do that, we did it a couple of years ago at the high school. And Teresa Quinelli has started that one. But she's doing one, and I'm just hoping that people would want to go. I'm going to put this out there for the next two weeks, because it is in two weeks. So if you can, come out to the Love Your Heart Fair. Other than that, I think we're doing the best we can. I can't wait to see the street trooper just come around, because the streets look really dirty. But, you know, I know it's not that time yet. And hopefully, if people would just take a little bit of time and sweep up in front of the house, it would be nice also. That's all I have.
Lee, you have anything?
Um, I'm just, I'm learning, I'm here. But to reiterate what Business Bar Mikan said about, you know, just making sure that, you know, keeping the town clean and taking care of your property and things of that nature. I think that speaks paramount to what we're trying to do here in Bristol Borough. Is, as we know that, you know, it's a welcoming place, people want to come and visit. You know, what do we want, what do we want to do to kind of reflect our vision and, you know, that kind of thing for people coming into the Borough? So I think that just being like, you know, make sure that we're being the best versions of ourselves. I think that, I think that, well, in a lot of ways, so that's all I have.
Louis. I just wanted to, the neighbors from the 400 block of Washington Street, who has had a very difficult time with an abandoned property there. And they wanted to extend their thanks to Mr. Dillon, Public Works, Chief Moores, and the Police Department for getting that straightened out for them. And I know that everybody's been working on it for a long time. And I claim that sometimes it's just difficult to get things to move, because we have, we still have to do it the way the law says. And it's finally come to fruition, and they are very thankful and they appreciate all the help that they receive from the Borough. So that's a real blessing in their neighborhood. So thank you again. That's it for me. Maria.
Excuse me, I really don't have anything to add. Other than I will be going, making my rounds through the North Board. Excuse me, soon, weather permitted, so that I can take notes as far as when we organize the cleanup, so.
Brian.
Just want to let everybody know that recreation basketball has started up. And the games this week will be Thursday, first and third grade, first and third grade. And Friday will be fourth through sixth grade. Both of those games will be 5:30 and 6:30 on each day. And then on Saturday, we will have games at 10 and 11 at Warner Stadium. That's it.
Brian.
Just on that note, you know, Brian's a pretty humble, close to the vest kind of guy sometimes. But I think it's important that everyone know the work that Brian has been putting into this basketball program. You know, Brian is a councilman, and he does that job great too. But, you know, he wears the hat of REC and does not speak about the work that he puts in. And, you know, Brian's running that program over there, he's over there night on end. And I just know, we appreciate it, and Brian does not ask for spotlight or for the attention and for the work that he does. So we appreciate it and thank you for that. And, you know, I think it's important for the parents to know that it makes Brian's life a lot easier if you sign up and you commit to it and you come. Because, you know, he is a volunteer, as are most of the people that are there. And it does create a struggle sometimes when, you know, you've got inconsistency in attendance. So I would encourage that to continue. And I wanted to kind of bounce off of that with the fact that we had a meeting this week, Councilman Giuseppe, President Giuseppe might want to talk about it more. I won't talk about what he might want to talk about. But Councilman Cousins, Councilman Johnson, myself, and Council President Giuseppe met with the REC board. Again, reiterating how happy we are that there is such activity surrounding Borough REC. Which, you know, two years ago, it was kind of dead in the water. So that is, without a doubt, a huge positive step. We are also, though, expressing our desire to kind of really kind of tighten up the process with REC, make sure people are in the know as to what's going on. Make sure our communication is clear and concise. And, you know, moving forward, we're going to try to really zero in on that. So just wanted to make it clear that we're very happy with where the program is, and we're going to try to even get it better and tighter and cleaner when it comes to our communication. I think what the mayor's talking about, the newsletter, can certainly help with that as well. Also, I want to thank the mayor for what he was just talking about with the old Simon and Schuster. It's been quite the eyesore for quite some time. I know, you know, Councilman Gattuso helped me and others when they had that fence that was knocked down for a while, getting that restored. And so slowly but surely, it seems like they're coming around, and I think that's a fantastic idea. It is one of our major entries into town. And there's a lot of areas along that whole stretch that need some work, which again, kind of bounces into that Green Lane Bridge, the underpass. As I think anyone that's lived in the Borough knows, it has been quite the challenge for many, many years. It floods, it doesn't. Is it related to the canal, is it not, is it an eyesore under there? Definitely. And I would reiterate that one side of that street is Bristol Township, the other side of that street is Bristol Borough. Above that street is a federal railroad. So we've got tons of things that kind of converge there, and we're still working hard. But I would like to bring a piece of good news related to that. I forget the name of the bridge, do you know the name of the bridge in Edgely? What's the name of the, the one that's been shut down?
Randall Avenue.
Randall Avenue. So Congressman Fitzpatrick has been working along with, I know, a lot of local representatives. And, you know, and I'm sure Tina and Tina Davis, that is, and Steve Santisaro have been involved as well. But that bridge is set to be reopened in the near future. And while that might not seem like a big impact on us, the amount of traffic that has been coming down Green Lane since that bridge has been closed, Green Lane was already a pretty busy thoroughfare. The amount of traffic that comes through there now is even more significant. So I think it's going to help with some quality of life issues. Hopefully, some of those big rigs that are going down all day might divert to that area. And I think it's only going to help as we try to improve what's going on. As we try to improve what's going on in Green Lane. That's all I have.
Okay, so just to jump back in about the REC. We had two meetings, one, I formed a committee, an executive committee. So we met first, and then an hour later, we met with the entire REC board who could make the meeting. And I think everybody's on the right track moving REC forward. And like Greg said, I mean, Brian puts a lot of time in with this basketball program. And everybody's playing it a certain part. The lead just jumped, you know, got on board, but he was involved with the REC prior to becoming a councilman. So I'm confident that it's going to really move forward. Our executive committee is Greg, Brian, Lee, and Lorraine. All council members are invited to attend it, there's also school board members that want to attend. But we have a seven or nine member group that is making decisions on moving forward. So you're going to see a lot of good things coming for the kids in this town, and there's a lot for them to do if they're interested. But we discussed mainly, the meeting I was at, that there's more than just basketball, soccer, and football. There's a lot of kids that don't play sports. So we need to start coming up with something we can provide for them, that's just not about, you know, the three sports and baseball. So the REC board said within the next two to three months, they'll come back. They're going to have some programs, hopefully, for council to look at and this executive board to look at. But that's my goal right now, is to make sure that we start coming up with things for kids that don't want to play sports. When we ran REC before, we did things like the Trenton Thunder game, bowling at the Bristol Bike Bowling Alley, just different things. We had pizza parties on a Friday. So I gave them a lot of ideas that I think that they were happy to hear and they, you know, what direction we might be moving in. Do a picnic at the fields, you know, buy a grill, hot dogs and hamburgers, maybe get a slide. So they're going to do it, believe me, you're going to see a big difference in what we're doing. The other thing is, we're already in the process with upgrading our, looking at our playground, all our playgrounds in town. To spruce them up, we're meeting on, I forget what day it is, with the company coming out? I think it's next week. Next week, we have a company coming out to look at, they're going to tour all the playgrounds, come back to us with suggestions on what we need, how do we update them? Because this equipment's old, but we do maintain it. So let's see if there's something new. They already started to paint some of the swing sets and put new seats and chains. So that's another thing we're moving in that direction. We also met at the baseball fields two or three times over the last few weeks. We want to start sprucing up the fields, the dugouts need to be redone. So they're starting on the one dugout on the big hardball field, that the roof is sagging, they're going to take that roof off. We're going to install a couple more supports, steel supports, and then we're going to redo one as a sample. And then we're going to go from there, we're going to try to redo some of the bleachers, the wood that's bad. So there's things happening at the field. The big press box, we definitely want to tear down and put a probably one story or a story and a half up for storage and concession. But that building that's there now has to definitely come down eventually. So that's another project that Amanda and Kurt and everybody's looking at trying to get this done. I think Betty mentioned earlier about cleaning, cleaning up your property and lead agreed. It doesn't cost anybody anything to sweep their sidewalk. And when you have people coming in, how many people use that app, 2,500 people? Over 2,500 people use that app on Mill Street. They came through town to get to Mill Street. They came down Beaver, they came down Jefferson, Alter, wherever they came from, Drew Pond Street. That's it, you know, you need to make sure that town looks good. So we're asking everybody, come spring, we don't want to cite you, we don't want to have to get them, just go outside and clean up a little bit. All right, we have three inspectors, and this summer, we're going to get very aggressive on making sure that the town looks good for visitors. And now, and for, for, take pride in your own property, to make it something special. Why should you clean up your property and your neighbor does nothing? So we really want to make sure that we're getting everybody to start buying into this system. And the last thing is, it's been about an 18-year project on Chester and Elm Street in Bristol. We start buying up properties. We said we would never force anyone out of their home, which we never did. And as of last week, we bought the last property on Chester and Elm Street. So finally, the redevelopment authority now, the ground's been in their name, because they were able to do things that council wasn't able to do. But hopefully, we're going to be out to bid in the next two to three weeks. And we're trying to get demolition started for March, sometime first, second week of March. Maybe third at the latest, but I doubt it, we're looking on a fast track. So we want to get this down before the spring, and the people are opening their windows with dust and things like that. So we're going to do everything we can to fast- like that. So we're going to do everything we can to fast track this whole process to get all them homes ripped down. And then we'll figure out what the borough wants to do with it. I mean, you go out with an RFP, you figure out, you know, somebody may come to us with a project. We know the people that own Mill Run is definitely interested, but they're still not done Mill Run. So, you know, there's got to be a commitment if that's the direction we go in. But like I said, our main goal right now is to get this property ripped down, cleaned up so the residents that live on Chestnut Street, I mean, on Pond Street and Jefferson don't have to deal with this anymore. So that's going to get fast tracked.
Did you want to mention, or I can mention, just for public safety, intersection of Mill and Rackwood, that construction is going to be... So as everyone's aware, we got a grant to redo for pedestrian safety, the intersection of Mill and Rackwood, that construction, I think is slated to start any day now. I think it was actually supposed to start tomorrow, the 13th. So be patient. That intersection's going to be going under construction for probably about four months. So it's important that you're patient as you're coming down Mill and traveling on the Rackwood. There's going to be a lot of construction in there for the next four months. But when it's all said and done, it's going to shorten the span between the sidewalks, which is going to better improve pedestrian safety.
Thank you.
All right. So all the businesses are, hopefully, I send a letter to them. It's going to be a really special improvement on that corner when it gets done. Amanda, you want to go to the podium and update us on some stuff that's going on?
Sure. One of those lines with some other grant awards that the borough secured recently. There's, there's three grant funds that are helping to fund three projects in the borough that were recently awarded in the last month or so. The first one is the House Street Vegetated Swale, which is a project we've probably been talking about for many years now. But is behind, in between House Street and Maple and Green Streets. So there's a small stream that runs in between those streets that we will be constructing a vegetated swale in that channel. Kind of not exactly, you know, as fun and interesting and beautiful as the Mill and Rackwood project, but will satisfy the borough's requirements for their MS4 permit. So that again will be done without any borough funding required for that. The second project is the Adams Hollow Creek Streambank Stabilization Project. So this was secured through DCED flood mitigation funding and through an additional $130,000 in state funding as well. This will be a continuation along Adams Hollow Creek of streambank stabilization. NRCS actually came in last year and did a stabilization project. I think in your packets, you might see a photo of that completed project. Essentially retaining walls and riprout along the stream at 1198 North Cedar Street, kind of along that bank. So we would be continuing that stabilization downstream and on the other opposite side of the streambank as well. Anyone who has walked back there or has been involved, there's been just major erosion and degradation of that streambank over the years. And those homes and structures are in need of, you know, some assistance in order to not have major damage in the future. So again, that project will not require any construction funding from the borough.
Amanda, can I ask you about that one real quick? What's the timeline on the work that's actually going to happen there? Or like when it might start and what the impact on that rural neighborhood there might be?
Sure. Yeah. So funding, hopefully, we'll start the design process in the next couple of weeks here. We'd have to go through design, permitting, and all to bid. We're probably looking at construction starting in late fall, you know, depending on the weather through the winter into next year a little bit. But hopefully, finishing that up early, early spring at the latest.
When, do you foresee like a lot of like, I, because it's such a tight street, I'm just wondering how you perceive like the site looking? Is it a full construction site? Like, I mean, you know, back roads and all that?
Right. Most of the work will be kind of in the stream then essentially. I know NRCS, when they had their contractor come in, came off of North Cedar Street and kind of stayed in the borough right of way as much as possible, and then did their work within the stream. They had the luxury a little bit of working along on the property of 1198 North Cedar Street. So again, we'll try to minimize the impacts to the residents, but, you know, may need some coordination for access if necessary. And the third project that was awarded grant funding for is Maple Beach Trailhead and Parking Improvements. So this is through, again, a DCED grant through the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program. That grant was the amount of $250,000. So this would be to add some additional parking along Maple Beach Road. As I'm sure everyone has seen, I've seen it myself, during festival time, that parking lot does fill up rather quickly. So hopefully, adding in a few additional spaces on Maple Beach Road will assist with large events and will provide a trail connection from that parking area into the main parking lot, connects to the DNL Trail and eventually to the East Coast Greenway Trail that they are trying to bring from Maine to Florida. Again, that's a similar construction timeline. Construction will likely be starting in late fall for that one. And again, it's completely weather dependent, so it will likely go into next year as well. So if anyone has any questions?
So just, so council knows, Amanda, we're trying to secure that parking lot on Hall Route 13. So where the Roman Oz is, like Arkham or whatever, to try to move parking into there for events and stuff. That's another project we're trying to, to get that done because I think there's so much traffic now that's coming into town that that would just open up a lot more parking for everybody to use if we could pull that off. So, you know, we're in contact with them. And to get back to this Mill Street intersection, we met out there the other day with Pendop for about an hour. Thank God the weather was nice because I don't like the cold. And they allowed us to work extended hours now. So when we're going to start on the Cantina side, we're going to do that intersection, no, the King George side, I'm sorry, do that intersection, curb ramping off first, move across to the canteen, and then move across to the new condos. But they're going to allow us to work from 7:00 AM, is it, or 9:00?
They actually didn't give us any restrictions.
So we're going to try to work 12 to 14-hour days because we may lose some time. We don't know what the weather's going to be like, but we have a good contractor, there's no question. He's got the manpower, he's got the equipment. And there's going to be a week to two, no, two weeks, they're saying to shut down that entire intersection. And when that time comes, we're going to have detour signs posted and hopefully, everything works the way it's supposed to work. So that's, that's going to be a, you know, big project on that corner. And you talk about these projects, you know, I'm, there's no secret, I supported Tommy Thomas my whole life because what he did for Bristol and John Galloway did a lot for the borough. But Tina Davis and Steve Santisaro came into our district and never missed a beat. They are on top of things. Tina calls, what do you need? What can we do? Steve's the same way. So we're very fortunate right now to have these two people representing the borough because I'm being honest with you, I'm overwhelmed with what they're doing right now for us. I mean, whatever we need, they're just, they're there for, for the borough. So.
They've been very age, especially in these grant programs too. They, we've had multiple calls with them and their staff to talk through the project specifics.
And Tina's, let me tell you, she spends a lot of time in Bristol. She visits restaurants, she's in Eat Tree, she's in Naked Brewery, she's, you know, she's in Caesar's. So she's in town. She likes to borrow. I see her in Jules. So we're, we're fortunate to have these two people representing the borough. They brought millions of dollars that nobody even knows. We got over $2 million for the theater already. And they're trying to get another $2 million for the phase two of the renovations. So, I mean, that money can go anywhere, but they decided to bring it to the borough. I mean, the mayor asked for, and the chief for electric bikes. We got four bikes, a UTV that's gone out. So cop cars, I mean, they're very good. They're very good. You know, I just personally, like I said, I know Tommy was, there's nobody, he's a great friend of mine, always will be a good friend of mine. But these two stepped up and never missed a beat. So I want them to know and everybody in town to know how important they are right now to this, to this council. Okay, Mr. Don.
Just a couple of quick things. Amanda mentioned the three projects. We had hoped to have them on the screen up here in the pictures so you could see what we project, things to look like once the work is done. But it was broadcast by Matt to the public. So they saw these pictures and all. But in your packet, it is Amanda's report showing what she anticipates going out to bid on these projects and also, I think by 2025, we'll have all those projects completed. So it is a mixed document that she gave. It's in your packet. So I just got a text or something from the school that are going to close tomorrow because of the snow. And that leads me into the trash recycling pickup tomorrow. They called, they said they intend to start, but nobody really knows what's happening with this weather. You know, it's supposed to be, it's all raining now, it's five, eight inches of snow. But they intend to start, but if they leave town, they will not be back till Friday. So we need to put the information out on Mixol once we're, and on TV, once we find out what's happening with the trash pickup. But we did not grind today because there's going to be a lot of rain that would have washed the grind away. So, you know, the other thing besides the agenda items, which I think are ready for your consideration is, in the packet was a co-responders agreement that the borough has with Bristol Township, Tullytown Borough, and the county. That agreement expires the end of March 2024 this year. And I think we're trying to get some answers. And it'll be on your agenda next month to consider either continuing with the project or the program, or maybe in a modified way. There's still some questions we have to get answered. I think Council Presidents have been in touch with the county, trying to get some answers. But that's an issue that will be on your agenda next month.
So about this program, I've been speaking to Commissioner Harvey. I spoke to the chief and the mayor. Right now, there's two girls that work between Bristol Borough, Tullytown, and Bristol Township. They're like caseworkers or social workers, and they go out. We have something going on that a cop, we don't need to leave a police officer there. So Bob called me today, texted me, gave me stats on how many times they responded, how many calls they did, how many times they contacted the person. So it is a good program, but it's an expensive program. And we just need to figure out if we're going to do it, how we're going to pay for this program. Do we need one person between the three of us? Do we need two between the three? So as Jim said, I'd like to, beginning of March, I'll get more information. And they will, according to what Commissioner Harvey told me today, is that they will be employed through the county. So they will not be borough employees. So they'll pay all the stuff that has to take place, you know, if there's any issues that goes through the county. So we just got to figure out that we want to continue. We're going to meet with the chief in executive session and the mayor and try to come up with a decision so we can let them know on how we want to move forward. And I think we need to talk to Bristol Township and Tullytown on what they're doing. The chief, been in meetings with the chiefs, the three chiefs from the other counties. So we'll try to get you as much information as we can. So in March, we can make a decision. What else? Jeff?
Most of the things I would talk about will be on your agenda.
All right. So we're going to switch from our work session to our regular. We need to add something to the agenda first, right? Do we do that now?
You have some issues though with the ad, tonight, talking about what the mayor mentioned. I think you should be ready to do it the next meeting. Just tell them to get the contract over and a letter, great meeting. Because you, if you're spending any money, it has to be on the agenda at least 24 hours in advance.
Okay. All right. So we can get everything signed.
Get ready to approve it at the March meeting.
March meeting, get ready to go. Okay. But right now, we're basically all in agreement. So we all know what direction we're going in. All right. So any public participation before we get into our next meeting? No public participation. So item two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for January 8th, 2024, accept the treasurer's report in November, and December of 2023, accept the fire chief's report for January of 2024, accept the inspection department report for January of 2024, accept the public works department report for January of 2024, accept the police department report for January of 2024, and accept the hardware report for January 2024.
Second, second by Mr. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor, opposed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve a resolution for the submission of a community development block grant application for funding from the Bucks County Community Development Block Grant Program for certain design and construction of accessible curb ramps in the amount of $500,000.
Second by Mr. Cousin. Questions or comments? All those in favor, opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve a resolution for the submission of a community development block grant application for funding from the Bucks County Community Development Block Grant Program for certain design and construction of accessible curb ramps in the amount of $500,000.
Second by Mr. Cousin. Questions or comments? All those in favor, opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve an audio proposal dated January 9th, 2024.
Should be voted. It should be audited.
Oh, thank you. That's okay. Approve an audit proposal dated January 9th, 2024 from Carl Hogan, CPA of BBD LLP, to audit Borough 2023 financial records.
Second by Mr. Catrich. Questions or comments? The only comment I would like to make is that our previous auditor has retired. And we went out and we discussed him. Let's go with Bristol Township, right? They're very difficult to find. They're very hard to get. Bristol Township recommended their auditor. So we're going to use, use them moving forward. All in favor, opposed? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a request for an extension of the time limitations from William and Carvada Ma for the 2210 East Fargate Avenue lot line change to May 30th of 2024.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor, opposed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions accepting municipal grant program contractors, contracts awarded by the redevelopment authority for the following. One, Bristol Borough Public Works Equipment in the amount of $86,987. Two, security cameras for Bristol Borough Facilities in the amount of $53,569. Three, Bristol Borough Police Patrol Vehicle in the amount of $60,873. Number four, Bristol Borough Police Command Vehicle in the amount of $55,288. Number five, Bristol Borough Fire Department Water Rescue Equipment in the amount of $77,588. Number five, Bristol Borough Fire Department Water Rescue Equipment in the amount of $77,502. Number six, Bristol Borough Police Tasers and Equipment in the amount of $45,845. Number seven, Bucks County Rescue Squad Ambulance in the amount of $199,652,000. And these are all grants in a total of the grants are $579,716.
From the R D A?
From the R D A, yes, from the R D A.
Second by Ms. Figueroa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number eight.
President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a five-year agreement with the supervisor employees.
Second by Mr. Catruchy. Questions or comments? So we settled the supervisor contract. We're still in negotiation with the borough employees. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I just want to say, everyone out there that's listening, these are all grants. And we're very fortunate to get all these grants. A motion to adjourn.
I would wish everybody, ladies, Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, thank you.
Life is waiting for you.
Happy Valentine, Mr. President.
I want my chocolate.
So I got a motion by Ms. Rodriguez. Second by Mr. Figueroa. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.